Hi. We'll be, uh, call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Engineering, the cities of Fargo, West Fargo, and Horace, Cass County, and the North Dakota Department of Transportation are working together to share information on large construction projects in the southwest portion of the metro area. The website Southwest Metro Work Zones DOT com was created to share the information, updates for 52nd Avenue South in Fargo, Cheyenne Street of West Fargo, and the roundabout construction on Cheyenne Street and 76th Avenue South in Horace. Road closures are currently in place at 52nd Avenue and Cheyenne Street Projects with road closure for roundabout project scheduled on April 29th. At the end of the meeting tonight, Engineering will explain what's going on in Main Avenue and some of the timetables so the Commissioners know for the phone calls we're getting. Fire Department, the Fire Department has offered firefighter positions to three candidates, adding firefighter numbers 498, 499, and 500 to the roster. The new recruits begin their seventh week training course on May 6th with graduation scheduled for June 21st. And ready to serve starting July 4th? So when we go numbering on the Fire Department, when you do 500, does that mean there's only been 500 employees in the city of Fargo? Wow, okay. Today is Earth Day, and the Main Avenue is celebrating tonight with several events, including a lesson on planting trees by City Forester Scott Lindell, tree giveaways from the Indy, uh, the North Dakota Forestry Service, and upcycling T-shirts into tote bags. A tenant east also can take a walk along the river to help pick up litter. And then the Main Library Building is celebrating the 10th anniversary next week with several events, including reception from 4:00 to 7:00 on April 29th with refreshments and live music, library trivia night on April 30th, and bestselling author William Kent Krueger to visit on May 6th. Transit, Matt Bus invites residents to celebrate Earth Day this week is to get your can on the bus formation. Residents can ride the bus for free when they donate one aluminum can on the board, uh, onboard fixed route vehicles. Proceeds from recycling and collected cans will be donated to the Homeward Animal Shelter. Public transportation pays an integral part in protecting the environment. Riding the public transportation and you, instead of using your personal vehicle is one of the most effective ways for citizens to reduce their individual carbon footprint. This morning, we had a declaration for Earth Day, and all the mayors of Fargo, West Fargo, Moorhead, and, uh, and, uh, Gilworth talked about the many different things we're doing. And one of the things is, we almost have 85% of participation in our recycling, and we have tons of trash that have been saved in that since its inception. So it's a, uh, interesting week for all of us. Agenda, is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda, adding an extra item to the end of the regular agenda? Consider a resolution titled Resolution Declaration of Intent. No special assessments as direct revenue source for the diversion project. Is there a motion, or is there, uh, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2019, regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, motion carried. Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 27?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Regular Agenda, Chief Todd has made a special, uh, effort to do this tonight. He had some other thing planned, so we asked to do this beginning of the committee, uh, commission meeting. So Dave, thanks for making arrangements in your schedule to give this, but you're going to give our annual report and tell us what's up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and Commission. Thank you for having me this evening. Each year, the Fargo Police Department produces an annual report. We actually had this, uh, we usually completed about mid-February. It's all our sta- stats and year activities. But because of the mayor's schedule and my schedule, and then not wanting to detract from flood efforts, where we got pushed back a little bit today. So thanks for having me. Uh, the Fargo Police Department produces this annual report and, and puts it out to the public so they can see what's happening in their community. Uh, that consists of a message from me and then reports from the different divisions and units within our department. After my message, we get right into our crime stats, which involve Part 1 crimes and Part 2 crimes. The Part 1 crimes are the more serious crimes, are the, the felonies, and the Part 2 crimes are, are the, the less serious crimes, usually misdemeanors. As you can see, we have a overall 3% increase in, in crime in the city of Fargo for 2018. That was evenly divided between Part 1 crimes and Part 2 crimes. Uh, we had, uh, six homicides in Fargo last year, which is unusual. Uh, all of those are, have been cleared by arrest or, or solved. Uh, one of them was, uh, in self-defense. And, uh, some of them, or one or two of them have been adjudicated and are completed, and, uh, there are several that are still going through prosecution. Our aggravated assaults was one of the numbers that, that we looked at a little more closely. Uh, this increase in aggravated assaults is mostly attributed to domestic violence, and it's related to situations involving that. Our property crimes, burglary, um, vehicle theft, shoplifting, theft from vehicle, uh, those are all crimes that, uh, usually involve people that we deal with on recurring basis. Um, and, uh, some of them have addiction issues, which drives their behavior as well. So, uh, you can kind of see that overall, we had 11,775 offenses last year. On the next page is our Office of Professional Standards. Uh, this is our Internal Affairs Sergeant that, that investigates and reviews, uh, issues within our department. They did 82 incident reviews. Those involve, uh, response to resistance, which is the use of force officers use sometimes to take somebody into custody. Uh, vehicle crashes, pursuits, tire deflation, device deployments. In all, we had 20 personnel complaints last year, and then that resulted in 19 disciplinary actions. The Field Services Division, comp, which comprises of approximately 130 personnel within our department, answered 89,565 calls for service last year. That's 245 calls per day. And made 6,592 arrests last year. That's about 18 arrests per day. So they, they're busy, um, but the, the calls for service are, are just several hundred calls for service, uh, over what they were last year. So we're saying it's just, uh, right around a 0% increase in calls for service.
Tony Grinberg.
Chief Todd, I noticed the prior slide, um... Get my glasses here. Issued 12,366, 6 traffic citations, which is a 10% decrease from 2017?
Yes, we, we've had a decrease in traffic citations. We, uh, that's attributed to a few different things. We, uh, as with the calls for service rise, we also did away with our Traffic Bureau and, and took those officers, which were approximately six officers, and moved them back into our regular patrol to help us fill our beats, uh, because of the, the calls for service that we were dealing with. So we do have a reduction in our traffic sites, but we're, we're working on trying to get those back up.
You were going to compliment our drivers driving better?
A lot of people got better at their driving habits than...
We're about 4,200 accidents per year, is, is what we're, we're at for the city of Fargo last year. Any other questions? Okay. Our city and field services, uh, which I said is about 130 personnel, uh, is divided up into four districts. Each one of those districts is overseen by a lieutenant, and then each district has three beats in it, which is overseen by a sergeant that has a contingent of officers working for them. So in this part of the report, you see kind of a report from those lieutenants on what's happening in their district, and some of the efforts they've, they've taken to address issues that might be particular to their district. Next page is our downtown resource officers. Officer Jessica White and Officer Scott Normandin, uh, they're fantastic officers that work in the downtown area. Uh, they have collaborated with the Downtown Community Partnership on a number of different initiatives, and this last year, they helped with the pilot program to have alcohol consumption at certain, certain events such as a street fair. Uh, the pilot program seemed to go very well with, uh, really close to zero issues, and you as a commission approved to make that a part of, uh, city ordinance moving forward. Our downtown officers also work with the Gladys Ray Shelter, uh, to do programming for the chronically homeless, uh, to work off any fines they may have accrued through municipal court, and they do that through, uh, community service projects in the downtown area, helping keeping the downtown area clean. That's a voluntary program that, uh, people participate in, and at the end of the, the year, they had worked off $30,000 worth of fines for the downtown. Uh, so that, uh, also in that program, we're able to refer them to mental health services, chemical dependency services, and, uh, get them steered towards, uh, resources for housing. Our K-9 unit, uh, consists of four K-9s right now. Three of them in the Field Services Division and one in the Narcotics Unit. Uh, our K-9 unit is really, uh, kind of one of our, uh, units that we're very proud of because they've, uh, done extremely well in their recertification processes and scored amongst the top dogs in the region of North Dakota, Minnesota, and South Dakota. So we have a very, uh, robust, uh, K-9 program that's, that's doing extremely well. You might have seen, uh, and a lot of our social media involves our community engagement team, which consists of our community trust officers and our cultural liaison officers. Uh, they have hosted, uh, a number of different, uh, events. One of, two of them were park outreach events called Fargo United at Madison Park and at Jefferson Park, and the purpose of those events was to connect with the local community and connect with them as law enforcement in a fun and casual event, and we partnered with, uh, local churches and other, uh, organizations to provide food, prize gives, giveaways, and entertainment. We also, uh, did school assemblies, uh, in all the high schools and middle schools, uh, here in Fargo for, uh, which was very successful. We, we partnered with a couple of hip-hop artists and a professional baseball player, and, uh, were able to do the, a kind of a message of focusing on bullying and racism and emphasizing, uh, the power love has over hate. These were very popular and well-received, and we've been asked to come back again this next year. We also do a summer camp for our at-risk kids, and, uh, that's called C4 Summer Camp, and we've been doing that, um, for several years now. Uh, we take them to TNT Kids Fitness Swimming, Elevate Rock School, MSUM Science Center, uh, even field trips on, on workforce, uh, ideas that they can think about for a career so they have, you know, something to vision towards, and it's kind of a mentoring coaching opportunity for our officers with these kids. We're able to do this, uh, through funding through our, uh, nonprofit, our Badges of Unity Fund, that a number of entities in our city have, uh, donated towards in order to fund because they see that as an important effort. Also, you'll see, uh, our newest, uh, addition to the community outreach team is David Carlson. Uh, he himself was an at-risk youth, uh, through Dakota Boys Ranch, and, uh, kind of a success story, and he really relates to these kids, uh, they really connect with him. We added a park officer in, uh, MOU with the Park District, um, to, to handle park issues. Uh, Officer Josh Marvig responded to 758 calls for service in the parks, uh, this last year, and so that seems to be a successful partnership. And we still have our School Resource Officer Program, which is seven school resource officers in the, in the seven high schools and middle schools in the, in the public school district. Our SWAT team is a multi-jurisdictional team, uh, of the surrounding agencies and ourselves, consists of the tactical team, the negotiations team, and the bomb squad. Uh, the SWAT team was called out 14 times in 2018 for a variety of different, uh, issues, and we also helped with the, uh, Vice President and the President's visit, uh, in order to provide security. And our, our Investigations Division, um, can, consists of 42 personnel. That's, uh, CIU, Narcotics and Street Crimes Intelligence, and, uh, those 42 people are divided up amongst those units. The Fargo Police Department handled at least 1,500 major case investigations, uh, this last year, ranging from homicide to thefts of vehicle and human trafficking. We're also, they're also responsible for tracking all of our registered offenders, uh, that are required to register in the city of Fargo and do quarterly checks on them. Our Narcotics Unit, uh, six detectives and one sergeant. In 2018, the sergeant, sergeant, or the Narcotics Unit saw a decrease in the amount of reported overdoses compared to 2017, which continues a downward trend from 2016 when overdoses hit an, an all-time high in our area. Uh, the Fargo Police Department responded to 30 incidents of reported overdoses, and of those reported cases, 11 people died as a result of, of overdose, and of those 11 deaths, five were related to opiates, three were related to methamphetamine, two were a combination of drugs and additional medical issues, and one was undetermined. The Police Department carries Narcan or Naloxone and used it a number of times, uh, to save lives. Of the 30 reported overdose incidents, Naloxone was utilized 18 times. And then included, there's some of, some of the cases that, uh, they've worked. Our Metro Area Street Crimes Unit, of course, is a unit comprised of officers and deputies from the Cass County Sheriff's Department and Clay County Sheriff's Department, and the West Fargo, Moorhead, and Fargo Police Departments. Uh, they are primarily focused on gang, uh, related activity, and they have also partnered with the, the US Marshals High Plains Fugitive Task Force, and they work with them on a daily basis in a, in a partnership. Last year, they had 332 arrests out of that unit, and also seized 14 guns off of people in gang-related cases. During the month of September, the Street Crimes and US Marshals conducted Operation Damage Control, and the operation focused on fugitives with suspected gang affiliations, violent offenders, and firearm violations, and the operation resulted in 41 arrests. Our Administrative Division consists of 23 people. Uh, they handle our budgets and grants, our recruiting and hiring, our training, our records, our property and evidence, our public information, uh, with the media, and our social media. And they've, of course, been busy. Uh, we hired 15 people last year in our hiring. Um, they took in 8,832 items of evidence into our property room and, uh, fingerprinted 3,071 people that come in for fingerprints, uh, during the day. So the department's been a, a busy department. We also take a little time, despite our busyness, to recognize our people for good work, uh, whether that be for courage and bravery or saving lives. Uh, it's an opportunity that we take each year to have an award ceremony and recognize the, the fine work that people do, along with their dedication to service. So just some fun facts at the very end of the report, but that concludes my annual report. I stand for any questions if you have any.
Any questions to the chief? Chief, I just noticed the sexual assault was up 19%. Is there more reporting or something else going on that?
You know, um, you know, the majority of those cases we looked at are people that are known to each other. Uh, there, there's a, a smaller percentage that are stranger-related, but, uh, you know, there, there's just a jump in them. It's, I, I don't have a, a, uh, a good reason I can tell you why that jumped.
And then do you think with the traffic fines increasing in amount, is that going to deter, uh, traffic violations, or is that going to help you in your enforcement?
Well, I, I think there, there's a deterrence value to a, to a higher fine. Uh, we've been, we've had those same fines since I started, you know, almost, oh, almost 32 years ago, and, uh, you know, 15 miles an hour over the speed limit is $15 ticket, so there's not a lot of deterrence in that. The, the legislation that was just passed and signed by the governor allows, uh, cities and counties, if they so choose, to, uh, raise the fines, uh, almost to double, well, up to double of what the state's fines are. Um, and that's, uh, something that we can certainly continue a conversation about, and if you so direct, uh, Nancy Morris and I can sit down and, and figure out a new bail schedule for you to look at.
Yeah, I think the Commissioners would like to see your new schedule so we can see if that's what we'd like to do. Any other questions? Commissioner Pepcorn?
I got two questions, one easy one and one unpleasant one. The, the, the pleasant one is, when is the new, uh, station going to be done?
Well, that's, uh, that's an exciting one. We're, um, we're making headway. We've got most of the second floor workspaces done, and they're finishing up the cabling. Uh, so we had to put new, uh, um, 6A CAT, 6A cabling in, and then downstairs, they've finished all the demolition and all the plumbing, and they're going to start putting walls up now and then sheet rocking. So August 31st is our target date for being done.
Okay, the unpleasant one is the accreditation, and I've asked you this question before, and, and I know we do lots of secondary and, and further training, but I, I think accreditation, the Fire Department does it, other departments, I just think it would be something that would be beneficial, and I, I, would you just give us your perspective on it?
I, I will. Um, I, I, it's, it's a little different for police departments than it is for fire departments. Uh, sometimes, uh, police departments get pushed into that for issues that they get into. We have just, are just finishing our whole policy book rewrite through LexiPol, uh, which is, was a considerable amount of work, and if you look at our strategic plan, you'll see that on this year, we have accreditation up for study, uh, just put a committee together to decide if that's the right thing to do for our department.
So, so Mr. Chair, I, I just, from my perspective, I, I think you would have to add some administrative costs if you decide to go through that, but I think we as a commission, and I, I'm, I'm telling you, I would, I'll, I would be willing to go to bat because I think it's very important, and it's not just for our overall department, then each officer, it's good for their professional career to say, "I'm, I'm a part of an accredited thing." The other thing is, I think it's better for us to be proactive than reactive, and like you were talking about, some departments, they've had issues, so they've been forced to do that. I would much rather see us be proactive, so that's just my editorial comment, and I, and I think it would be a good thing. But I appreciate you being, uh, being careful about it and, and researching it, so thank you much for that.
And just, uh, maybe to, to help with some, any concern, you have, the LexiPol policy, uh, program that we do is something that we pay for, but it automatically updates our policies for every state law change, federal law change, case law that happens through courts, and so it, it forces us to keep our policy and procedures up to date, which is a lot of what accreditation is. Um, but we're not opposed to looking at it. Uh, accreditation, I think LexiPol cost for us is about $15,000 a year, and then accreditation would probably be $15,000 to $20,000 more, plus, um, at least one and a half, uh, employees to manage that accreditation process. So I just wanted you to know.
Mr. Strand.
Going, going into it.
Thank you, Chief. This is a, a great report, and you, your department, I'm sure you all know, we're real proud of the public service that, that is provided here. I'm just curious if you could touch on morale? I, I, I don't want to ever assume anything, but how is the state of the morale in the department, and are there any needs or, or anything on your wish list, or, just to, to give us a sense of that, if you would, Chief Todd?
Well, I would say morale-wise, sometimes the chief is not the first to know on, on things like that, but, uh, it's, it's, uh, I think it's fairly good, but it's, there's also challenges that sometimes affect morale. One of the challenges right now we have is staffing. Uh, it's not for, for lack of the city giving us the staffing that we need, but let me give you an example. Right now, we have 24 positions that are not available to us for staffing on the street. Three of them are for FMLA, and we have another four coming up. That's what happens when you have a really young department, they start having kids, and they take FMLA. We got two people on military leave. We've got eight conditional offers out there that are turning into full offers and being sworn in on May 13th. We've got four people at the academy in Bismarck. We've got five people in, and police training officer, uh, training, so they're not yet ready for the street, and then we got two vacancies. So that's 24 people right there, and so that, that can stretch people a little bit. Whenever we lose somebody to resignation or moving to a different job, um, it can take us anywhere from eight months to a year to fill that position, and that's because it's about a three-month process of hiring them, doing the background. If they don't have the academy, which a lot of people don't now, that's another four months, and then there's five months of, of training in the squad car with a training officer beyond that, so it can take up to a year to, to get somebody on the street. And so when we get hit with, uh, you know, a number of vacancies or people not available to us, it can stretch us a little bit, and I think that can affect morale a little bit. We try to do little things that help, uh, keep morale going. We're doing the compensation study right now that the mayor has directed. I think that will help morale when we, we're able to address that. So there, there's a number of things that we can do as employers to, to help with the morale, too.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Chief. Good report, we appreciate it, and I'm glad you gave it to the Commissioners because then any questions come up, they know what's, know what's going on, and all that online, they can find that as well.
Yes, this will be on our website and on our Facebook page, right at, right now.
Thank you. Public hearings, Section 5307 Federal Transportation Administration Grant Preliminary Program for Projects in 2019. Transit Administrator Julie, uh, Julie Bubelman to explain. Did you ride the bus to here tonight, or?
I did not, I have to admit. There's not good service where I live. I'm just kidding. Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Uh, every year, the Federal Transit Administration allocates a certain amount of money to transit, and in this instance, we were able to get 2.7 million. Of that, I think one of the things that's, that's interesting is we have, uh, these, if performance indicators, small transit intensive cities, and if you meet some of these indicators, you get additional funding. Well, we did meet a couple, and we got another 523,000. That's included in the 2.7 million. So I just wanted to note that, but we are required to have a public hearing annually, uh, and that's the reason I'm here, so happy to answer. Any questions?
If the public wanted to see this, where would they find this? On the website?
Uh, we have it, uh, well, right now, we just, we haven't posted on the website, didn't want to do that. It was in the newspaper, in the legal sections, yeah, for two weeks.
Is there anyone here which to discuss the Transit Administration Grant Program? Is there anyone here wishes to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing. Any Commissioners want to ask any questions? Are we okay with this? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. B Renaissance Zone Project, BCWB ND LLC for commercial lease project at 550 Second Avenue North. Julie, who's to explain this. Uh, Nicole Crutchfield, I'm sorry, is to explain this.
Uh, yes, um, tonight we have a Renaissance Zone lease application, and it's located at, um, 550 Second Avenue North, and it's within the 123 Broadway building. Um, as, uh, allowed by law, um, the lease applications come directly through staff to you, and, um, uh, they don't go in front of the Zone, Renaissance Zone Authority. Uh, this project is proposing to lease commercial space. The project application meets all the state and local requirements for approval, including, um, the use is consistent with goals and objectives as set forth within the Fargo Renaissance Zone Development Plan. Um, the applicant is proposing to lease 3,000 square feet and looking to occupy the space sometime in, uh, early May. The applicant estimates, uh, 33,500 income tax exemption over the five-year term. According to the Renaissance Zone Development Plan, the prospective tenant must be leasing- According to the Renaissance Zone Development Plan, the prospective tenant must be leasing a space from a building that has been approved as a Renaissance Zone project. And this project was approved by the City Commission in February twenty, February twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen, and received final approval by the state January twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen. We recommend approval and be here to answer any questions. The applicant, our representative of the applicant is also present.
Does that applicant want to speak?
Maybe that's some of his coffee.
Oh. It actually is. I'm kind of unfamiliar with this, so you just yell at me if I'm doing something wrong. Yeah, I, obviously, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. We've been a little bit behind the ball on some of the aspects of our project here, and this was one aspect that we are kind of playing catch-up on here.
Just, just for the public, just give your name, so they know who you are.
My name is Brad Samoglio.
Any of you have any questions? They're okay with it. Thank you, Brad, appreciate it. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Gary?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item C, Application for Potalicious, Doing Businesses Potalicious for Class H Alcoholic Beverage License at six-twenty-three N P North Avenue North. It was continued from a three-twenty-five-nineteenth regular meeting. Steve Sprague to explain.
This application got delayed a little bit because of some confusion over getting a, a building permit. They have secured that. There's also some questions with the health department and, and exactly what the layout of the restaurant was going to be, and all of those have been solved, or, you know, the question's answered. And so, it appears to you now, after coming to the liquor control board with a recommendation of approval.
Whoops. We have the other one? Nope, we don't, okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this license? Anyone wishes to speak? If not, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any discussion on this by the liquor board? All okay? Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application filed by BCWBND, Doing Black Coffee and Waffle Bar for Class One or L? Is it one?
Aye.
Aye. Alcohol Beverage License at five-fifty Second Avenue North. Steve Sprague again to explain.
So, this is the same location that we just saw with the Renaissance Zone. The Class I license is a beer and wine license that allows for a physical bar structure. They do have to sell more food than they do alcohol, and so, we've done the background check, and it comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Is there anyone here who wished to speak to this? Anyone who wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
So, you can, beer, wine, waffles, and coffee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you. Transfer Class F A Alcoholic Beverage License to Barbara Cola, Doing Business of Barbara Cola at Barbara Cola MD LD Chef's Table Private Dining and Events to be located at six-seventy Fourth Avenue North.
So, this is moving the liquor license that was at Barbara Cola on Thirty-second Avenue South, and they're going to move it and change the name. They're moving down to the Sanctuary Event Center. There is a portion of that building that was not part of the liquor license at the Sanctuary, and so, that's where they're going to locate this. Now, they're not going to have, like, open for public dining. This will be used, then, as a, as a catering license, and every time that they have a catering event where they want to use the liquor license, they'll have to apply for an E permit in order to take it off the license premise. We have done the background check on this one also, and again, it comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer license? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Transfer of Class F A Golf Alcoholic Beverage License from E R L Incorporated to Seasons at Rose Creek to Big Herbs Bar and Grill, Business as Big Herbs at Rose Creek, to be located at fifteen-hundred Rose Creek Parkway South. Steve Sprague to explain again.
Again, this, this is a golf license. They have to be located at a golf course, have to sell more food than, than alcohol during certain parts of the year, and this is kind of the culmination of the events at the Seasons at Rose Creek, or, you know, closing up that, that facility and making it, making the transfer so that they can continue operating there long-term. There were a couple of issues in the background check on this one, but they were more than ten years old, and so, the police department had no objections to, to moving forward with this one.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval, and then I have a comment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Let me just say that a lot of folks in South Fargo are anxious for Rose Creek to open again, and they're, so the news lately and the radio interviews, there's a lot of excitement in South Fargo for Rose Creek now being a destination area for, for a restaurant as well as golf.
Yep, absolutely. They have some excellent plans out there. They're already operating another facility in a, in a different part of the county, and, and so, I think that there's excitement, not only in the community, but at the Park District, and, and I'm hoping here also.
Very good. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item thirty, Planning Department Updates. Commissioner Grinberg to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I asked for three items to be placed on the agenda, and would also look to Commissioner Strand for his, his comments, as the commissioner who has the planning portfolio. This is the third association, annual, or, forget the acronym, Planning Association, National Association. First meeting I attended was in New York. Last year was in New Orleans, and this year was in San Francisco. Commissioner Strand joined us, as well as a number of staff and folks from the Planning Commission. And some of that, you know, thought of putting this on the agenda tonight was also tied into where we're at with our Land Development Code process and our Core Neighborhood, RFP, as well as some perspectives from the Downtown Neighborhood Association to kind of tie this together. And as, as you know, we're all about growth and planning and improvement. And from my perspective, you know, what I took away from this year's meeting really kind of set, you know, the stage of what I've learned as the, the process of planning. You know, you might recall, two years ago, I shared a comment in one of the presentations that was made, that from a standpoint of a strategic level and, and the elected positions we hold, that people, people expect progress and change, but they fear the change. And that was one of the things I took away from the meeting in, in two years ago. You know, one of the presentations I attended this, last week, was that people are against infill, and people are against greenfield development. They're against all development. And so, you wrap around all that to what our role is for a community, and how we go about our business and making better decisions and being more transparent. I decided to offer that perspective. And my takeaway from this meeting was the whole notion of affordable housing. A lot of sessions on affordable housing. And it was Sunday morning, about eight-thirty in the morning, you know, one of the presentations really covered, it really had pulled it together for me from defining what affordable housing is, is we look to that as a strategy and a way to improve in our community. It's about affordability, obviously. But one of the examples given outside of San Francisco, recognizing the markets are different, housing costs are higher, and, and wage rates are different in California than in Fargo. But for me, the key takeaway is, we need better data of the hundred-and-forty thousand individuals who work and live in our region, and their income levels, and, and then wrap around that, you know, definition of affordable housing. And the example given with the presenter on Sunday morning last week was that fifty percent of the people living outside of the San Francisco area in a small community do not meet the affordable wage area of affordable housing. And so, that really kind of hit home with me, is that's fifty percent of the population can't afford the rent or the price of a house. And so, how do you, how do you change that for affordable housing? So, I think we need to have that discussion in our community around definitions of wage rates and affordability. As an example, back to this presentation, thirty percent of your income should be for housing. And so, if you take fifteen dollars an hour, at thirty thousand dollars a year, nine thousand dollars should be your budget for housing. And so, when we look at that, it's just one simple example, you know, what's our cost of housing? What's our range of prices for rents? And then have that data to better make better decisions as we move forward. So, so that's just my quick comment or two on, and what I took away is one item, and starting to look for better data. I think we're going to have some information on that tonight as well, from the Downtown Business Association. But I'll yield to Commissioner Strand for his thoughts, but appreciate allowing the, this agenda and come forward, have some discussion as we move forward to having more of this dialogue at the commission level, as well as our task forces that Nicole is going to talk about, as well as the role of the planning commissions.
Commissioner Strand? Thank you. Commissioner Grinberg, you know, I'm, I'm learning as we go forward, as I go forward, and planning and community development are basically two sides of, of the teeter-totter. And, and when you go to a conference like the APA, it's, it's, they're both front, front and center for us to learn. With the city of Fargo going forward, and we'll hear more, but with us going forward to revisit the Land Development Code, and as we go forward to revisit, revisit the core neighborhood plans, we've got some real, real opportunities ahead of us to, to, to catch up with the times, to, to contemporize our, our, our approach to the city, and, and to be smart about future growth. So, it's going to be fun. We, I see Mike, Michael Maddox in the audience, and Aaron were, back there, they were at this conference. We had Commissioner John Gunkelman from the Planning Commission, and Sharra Fisher from the Planning Commission. So, this was an all-out effort for us to kind of, as much as possible with Nicole and team, to get on, on the same page as, as we unfold these, these strategic plannings going forward. And it'll, it'll really be fun to, to work on this, to have the community engaged, and to see where we all go. Bottom line, last thing I'll say is, we're really fortunate, as a city goes, with what our challenges are, we, we can handle them. And our challenges here are more often than not growth-related, which is an okay place to be. So, we're, we're, we're really, really wealthy in, in what we have as far as resources, opportunity, and, and people to work with. So, it'll be fun to see where Fargo goes with everybody at the table. So, your Land Development Code and Core Neighborhood reps. Is that Nicole?
Yeah, Commissioner Grinberg asked for just a quick, few updates, and, which is good, because pre, last time I was in front of you was pre-flood, and so, my brain's been a little blitzed since then. But, so, March eleventh, it seems like eons ago, but it was just March eleventh, that I was in front of you asking for approval to submit, to issue out an RFP for a Land Development Code update. And we're breaking this down into two steps. The first step is actually Land Development Code audit, because we want to kind of assess what we have and see how much change we need to make. And so, that RFP is scheduled to go out here in a couple days, April thirtieth. And in front of you, just as a quick update, a little bit of our timeline, but we think this to be a six-to-eight-month process, and lots of outreach and engagement, stakeholder input along the way. So, that's going to be a requirement in the RFP as part of that process, and look forward to more information on that as we continue to go forward. But the RFP will be, again, issued out in a few days, and hoping we'll get broad reach, both locally and nationally or regionally. We know there's a lot of firms that do this kind of work.
Very good. Any questions, the commissioners?
Maybe I'll step into the Core Neighborhood Plan update. One thing I wanted to mention is, we have two, two projects happening, and in the earlier days of this developing of these projects, the Land Development Code and the Core Neighborhood Plan were like one project. I just wanted to clarify, we're working on two different projects. And then in that first project, Land Development Code, we're actually working on a two-step process. So, you'll be engaged along that way during the audit of the Land Development Code, review comments as part of that, analysis as part of that, and you'll be asked to make a decision along that first step along the way, like, how much change we want to make, when do we feel comfortable, and be presented options. The Core Neighborhood Plan's a little different. That is going to be more like the Downtown and Focus Plan, where we look at the areas north of nineteen, we look at the areas at Nineteenth Avenue North, south to Interstate, River on the east, and Twenty-Fifth Street to the west, and then kind of looping and bringing in the Madison neighborhood. When we look at that housing and job core area, we're really deficient in a future land use plan and common vision. And so, the goal here is to work with consultants, to help us do engagement, a lot of stakeholder input, learning, and these are kind of five objectives that we're hoping to find, collective and broadly-supported future vision. Number two, a clear understanding of the various issues affecting the core neighborhoods. Three, improving our trust and understanding between and amongst stakeholders. Four, a framework for which future planning efforts can be built upon. And then five, clearly defined implementation actions and recommendations. So, this is just staff's perspective on the Core Neighborhood Plan. Goals of what we've been hearing from the last, you know, decade of discussions, at least since I've been here. I know you've all been part of many more discussions. I know the neighborhood associations have been part of a lot of additional discussions. So, at tomorrow's Community Development Committee, we're going to be unpacking this a bit. And then at Planning Commission's Brown Bag in May, we'll be unpacking about this a bit. We're looking at both the Community Development Committee and the Planning Commission being stakeholders and, and champions of these two processes, but knowing that both processes, Land Development Code and the Core Neighborhood Plan, will be seeking steering committees as part of those, as well as a lot of engagement. We're looking at, this calendar is a little bit outdated, but we're looking at an RFP available. We're a little ahead of schedule, that doesn't happen very often, but looking at a, trying to publish an RFP by June first. So, we're about a month ahead of schedule, and then trying to allow room for that dialogue as we look at the drafts of that RFP and make sure it captures the vision. On the Downtown and Focus Plan, we did circulate that RFP to our stakeholders to make sure we are capturing the vision and goals that they were hoping to do, because the last thing we want to do is hire a consultant and then start heading down a path that nobody wants to be part of. And so, we want to get that engagement along the way as we publish the RFP. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Calls, any reason it takes a year? Could it be done quicker than that?
We'll see what the, the consultants come back with. You know, to do good thorough outreach usually takes a good six months at least to talk to everybody. We look from small focus groups to large town hall meetings, everything in between, online input. So, we really want to capture as much breadth as possible. So, I know in the Downtown and Focus Plan, we try to really shorten that schedule, and the answer that most of the application team, we had twelve, I think, teams submit for that downtown plan, and all of them are saying it, you know, the minimum for that outreach is a good six months. And so, I think knowing that this is going to be a little bit more complicated, we want to build in that year.
Thank you. Any questions, the commissioners?
Thanks, very excited about this.
Thank you very much. Carol Schlossman, you're going to come up, give a report?
Thank you for your emails. Hi, yes, I'm Carol Schlossman, and Mayor Commissioners, thank you for the invitation, and Tony Grinberg, thanks for sending that out to us. I am here representing the Downtown Neighborhood Association. I'm the vice chair of that organization. We have sent a few comments forward, and Mr. Grinberg, Mr. Strand have asked that we follow up and give you some more in-depth reason behind our comments. The downtown master plan has been incredibly important to the downtown, and we understand that it is difficult to find the resources to move that plan across the different teams and different departments in the city. As the core neighborhood plans move forth, we suggest that the city dedicate a champion and resources so that there is a cross-team effort to actually use these in-depth plans as a day-to-day tool for go, no-go, and to make sure that the city upholds the will of those that have put forth that plan. We are pleased that the city has used parts of that plan. We appreciate the redo of the main avenue, and of course, the bridge going across to the river. And we look forward to the city then paying more attention to that downtown plan. In this document that I provided, we use references to the downtown plan, so you can see how the Downtown Neighborhood Association regularly counts on that plan to understand the direction that the city is going. And as we, as investors and stakeholders, we would like the city to really depend on that. Fourth Avenue parking, at the time, now that we have a TIF with that parking garage, we think it is a great time, and is supported by the downtown master plan, to look at public good. And in that downtown master plan, it cites areas as public use, art, and green space are examples. None of those points were made with under the TIF. We're also concerned, because when you go through that process, five of seven, you can qualify for five of seven of the criteria, and that doesn't have to include those three. What we specifically want with that garage is, we are asking for a downtown water station that can be used by the public. We would like to see a police substation on a very busy area for that the police department is regularly is in attendance, as well as it gives them covered parking, as we all know in downtown, that's a rarity. And we think that would be a great complement to the police and to the downtown. As well, it's a great opportunity to introduce some green space. Green space, there can be all kinds of different green space, vertical. It can be on the rooftops, it can be in the alley, it can be along the sides in vertical treatment. But please, consider that as a requirement for these developments as they go forward and use public monies. As well, we are very interested in potentially a safe public restroom. Now downtown is very short on family-friendly restrooms. We know this is a long stretch for the city, but we do believe that downtown deserves some stations for families to use restrooms as their downtown, especially as we get more and more activity centered around the family. As far as downtown safety, it's always top of mind. It was top of mind when we went through the downtown master plan. Intoxication and aggressive behavior continues to be an issue for those of us who live and those of us who are employed downtown. Therefore, we continue to urge stronger oversight. We greatly appreciate the police department. These beat officers and the resource officers do an amazing job downtown. We know them, we appreciate them, but they can't do it alone. And one area that we think that can tighten up and help with safety is ensuring that there is tighter oversight over some of the alcohol ordinances that are already in existence. The city has done that recently by sending, and we compliment the LCB board for doing so, sending out a letter to the licensees that they have to be compliant with server training. As well, they have to attend an annual meeting. We think this should even go further in that review process for renewals. It should include other oversight compliance, such as the underage and serving to intoxicated, overly intoxicated individuals, which are city ordinance to this point. We also encourage data-driven methods to ensure that the police force can use data effectively and efficiently. We know they are resource-strapped, and for them to continue to try to find resources to do underage compliance, last year, less than half of the liquor licenses had a check. And of those, 16% failed. But they don't have the resources to do the four per licensee that our city guides. And so we need to find other tools to provide the police department in oversight to deal with some of these issues. The fun part of this tonight, and this is where we come to the city with from the American Planning Association. So we are very interested in middle income and workforce of affordable housing. And as previously stated, the Downtown Neighborhood Association is fundamentally concerned about the economic foundation of those living downtown. And we believe paying attention to the type of housing downtown will make a difference. This is supported by the downtown master plan, and it is also, has been supported by the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC. They rolled that out way back in 2015, and there hasn't been a lot of action, but we do believe that this is a good time to ramp that up. The role that the city can or should play is a matter of strategy determined on the willingness and the effort to create long-term value in our city. And we know that when people own their own homes, they stay here longer. If we invest in it, they will come and they will stay. So we know that there is not a very good common definition for middle income, nor is there a good common definition for affordable housing. And looking for that definition, we are, the Downtown Neighborhood Association is using the CBRE, a Fortune 500 real estate services, multi-billion dollar company, their definition. They recently released a white paper on the importance of the United States investing in affordable housing. That income level they're citing is $35,000 to that $75,000 range. So when the Downtown Neighborhood Association is looking at, we are saying, what is the need? Where do we fit? Right? We use something called Tetrad. It is a developer's software tool that projects all kinds of demographics that are used by developers to see their fit with a community. Hopefully in 2020, it will update that baseline that they use, but they use all kinds of government resources in order to provide those projections. So based on the poll that we recently did, downtown, and the map is drawn according to the city's map of downtown, the median household income of downtown is half, less than half of the national and 59% of overall Fargos. And again, looking at that sweet spot of 35 to 75 for affordable housing, more than half of downtown falls beneath that benchmark of 35,000. 28% falls into that benchmark. 31% does citywide. That's a lot of availability that we have for people to fall into that group. Downtown is increasing in its housing density, but what I found amazingly fascinating is that 72% of downtowners live alone, compared to 37% of a Fargo and only a quarter of a nation. And some of this has to do with being a college town, but 72% is a really high number. Downtown is projected in the next five years to grow faster than Fargo, and that's pretty cool in itself. Fargo itself is way outpacing the United States, and we can be very proud of the development efforts of our city and our ability to attract people to live here. Our rental ratio, we believe, is an issue, especially downtown. This cites about 84% of our downtowners live in rental units, 16% in ownership. Across Fargo, that number is also high, 53% rent, 47% own. I've seen a higher number than that. I've relayed that to some, and that has to do with whether you include the vacant units. We have vacancy rate in Fargo of somewhere between 8.76 and 11% vacancy in rentals. So when you include that, that ratio does increase for the rentals. Overall, the United States is flipped. 65% of those housing units are owned in the United States, 35% are rental. We think Fargo, for its long-term sustainability and for baseline of economics, because when you own a home, it drives all kinds of economic, as well as well-being benefits. The age of downtown, we're old. So our median age is 38, Fargo's is 32. So a lot of that does have to do with downtown just not, is not a place that most people want to raise their children. So what is ownership affordable? So quickly going through that, you basically, it's, you know, some mortgage math. And again, looking at that sweet spot of $35,000 and $800 a month that should go to their regular housing bill, that they can afford $110,000 home in Fargo if they don't have student debt, if they don't have medical debts, if they don't have credit card debts, and the list goes on. For the higher end at $75,000, that's a $215,000 home. And again, that's without a large level of debt. So then we looked at the availability of homes in this price range. When you think that even in downtown, we have almost 800 individuals that fit that profile of affordable housing. So for overall, we looked at the MLS listings in Fargo for $110,000, and we just put in 10% down. We know a lot of times the people at that income group have struggled with that percentage. But using that across the board, we found that there were 38 listings right now for single condo, single-family condos, townhomes. Listed at that $215,000, four were in the downtown area, and they needed a lot of work. So I'm not sure where they would get the money to fix up those homes. Also at the $110,000, there were five listings yesterday, I saw seven today, and none were in the downtown area. Couple weeks ago, Do It All Downtown hosted a panel on housing that millennials, and there was a statement that millennials really aren't interested in ownership. However, we dug into that, and we cannot find evidence of that. What we find is that they are tending to delay their purchase for a variety of reasons. Some of it has to do with student loan debt, some of it has to do with wages, some of it has to do with delaying marriage and having children until they're older, in their 30s. All of those put together delays their purchase. What we hope is that as we put an effort into this, and are we willing to, we know this is not an easy lift. You know, it has to be profitable for the developer, it has to meet the needs of the community who wants to purchase. But we believe that if we can figure this out as a community in the long term, we're going to be a much stronger and more stable downtown and surrounding area. So thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, the commissioners?
Appreciate all the work your team did. You have a lot of information that you gave us here today, which we appreciate, and your email had a lot in there as well. And it does give the planning department some things to look at and ponder and pursue. I assume Commissioner Grinberg, you guys will digest it a bit.
Yeah, I mean, we talked when we were together, and, you know, okay, what are the next steps for the core neighborhood plan, and what's the committee makeup, and our process for, you know, aligning with some of the priorities here, and as we move forward, as well as the LDC. But I think it's important that as we progress through, as Nicole shared tonight, that we have, you know, invite the neighborhood associations, maybe a spokesman or two, just to kind of give their perspectives as we go through this process, and look for, you know, opportunities and decisions that are going to meet the objectives and actually say, in two years, four years, five years from now, we accomplish these things. And I have a comment or two on the TIF policy tonight, that I think will come back as an example of that. That was a different agenda item, but I'll hold my comment back till we get to that item. But thank you, Carol, for coming in.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Carol, you know, you folks are just doing some great work. This is the kind of report that I would expect to come from a consultant from more than 100 miles away.
Yes, I am a consultant, so there you go.
And one, you know, there's a lot to digest, and it's just the beginning of our communication, our ongoing communication. Perhaps if I look at Nicole, maybe we'll look for a time for you to come to the Community Development Committee and have, drill a little deeper into your discussion points here, the information you're sharing, because it's so relevant, and to the folks who are supporting you and working with you. And who'd have thought, you know, Downtown Neighborhood Association, we really do have downtown neighborhood folks. And we don't always remember that. But it's a goal we all share to have this become a really viable neighborhood for people going forward, and your role in that is just really important. Thank you.
And for the public that doesn't know, you oftentimes are having meetings and discussions with your neighbors in the downtown area, having discussions about where we're going next, so I think I should be commended for that as well. Thank you. Item 31, Appointment for Growth Initiative Fund Board of Directors, you have my recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Your second. Excuse me, roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Capcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Recommendation to authorize staff to submit request for the ROARs Development Incorporated for tax increment financing for redevelopment property located northeast of University Drive and 11th Street North, 11th Avenue North, and city's financial advisors to review. Jim Gilmore to explain.
Yes, I know you're very familiar with the zoning that took place on the Newman Center and ROARs property earlier this year. This is a request from ROARs for some tax increment financing assistance for that portion of the project that includes a market rate housing and the townhomes. Our policy has been, prior to the staff or the financial advisors starting to review this, to make sure you're comfortable with us working on it and to bring it to you for your consideration. What I'm suggesting here is, if we're going to look at the ROARs portion of the development, that we also look at the entire block and see if we could use a portion of the increment created from ROARs, as well as the market rate faith-based housing, and use that for some projects, perhaps redevelop some blighted properties elsewhere in the neighborhood. This way, not only the developer would benefit to have his project more feasible, the neighborhood would benefit from hopefully a good quality project, but also we could address some of the housing needs elsewhere in the Roosevelt neighborhood. And so that's what I'm suggesting, is we take a broader look at this, to not be a TIF district that's just for the ROARs development, but try to create a renewal plan that would benefit not only this particular development, but some scattered sites throughout the neighborhood. And so if you're comfortable with that, I have the recommended motion there, that we take a broader look at this, as well as send the ROARs to application to our financial advisors. If you approve this, this would, under the new policy, this will go back to the tax increment, I mean, the tax exempt committee. There would be a planning commission review to determine whether or not the plan is consistent with the overall goals of the city, such as GO 2030. And this would come back to you, probably not until about June, by the time we included all the hearings and notices. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. Jim, I'm just curious, what's the difference between this recommended vote and the one our commission already took, where we already voted to have staff begin the processes of exploring, creating a TIF district there?
Don't believe you've acted on this one.
It was a zoning.
It was a zoning.
We didn't vote on the TIF. I thought we did way back months ago.
Commissioner Gregg, what's concerning to come back for a TIF, and our new TIF policy is that Jim has to come forward, and developer can request to be evaluated for a TIF, and that is done by an outside party, so they don't just come. And then it comes back to us next time with a recommendation to or to not do that. What Jim's suggesting, as part of the TIF, would use for development redevelopment. The question I'd ask back to Jim is, that the TIF, are you taking a quarter of that or half of that TIF and using it for neighborhood?
That would be, you know, based on that financial review, what I would say is, you know, the ROARs, the most they would get is what is created from their project, and outside of their project, the increased tax base from the church project would be used 100% for the neighborhood. You know, I haven't, you know, discussed with ROARs where we, where that should be. We'll get the request, we'll look at the financial review.
So you will review the part that would go to the neighborhood, so it's not necessarily a quarter, or a third, or a half, it's just something you would decide after you've looked at the TIF evaluation.
That'll be set in the development agreement, which we'll bring back to you. So when you act on a development agreement, you know specifically how much would go to ROARs and how much would go to neighborhood projects. May I just clarify too, I think Larry Nygaard from ROARs at the zoning meeting did indicate that he was going to apply for a TIF, but that did not happen until recently.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. Maybe Mr. Nygaard could answer this, but I'd be curious, to what degree this project depends on the TIF district to move forward? Or not?
Let me address that now?
If you would.
Larry, excuse me, Larry Nygaard, Commissioner Strand, it's vitally important for us to have some assistance with regard to the TIF. There are, in a preliminary review of this project, there are a lot of eligible expenses that we're going to incur in the redevelopment process. Maybe one of the biggest ones is the storm water retention system that we have to build underground and retain water. There are a number of other ones, they haven't all been identified at this point, but they're very important to the overall project. I might also add that another aspect of what we would hope to do is, we've identified a couple of homes within that block that we think are worth saving. We're working with the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association about locating lots within the Roosevelt neighborhood that are currently vacant, and we think that that would be an economical process to move those. those viable homes to these vacant lots and create additional single-family housing in areas of the Roosevelt neighborhood. So, we think there's a lot of synergy that can come from this, and we're looking forward to your support tonight.
Commissioner Grinberg?
I'm certainly going to support moving next steps on this, still with, you know, to see the numbers and the data that comes back, as far as making the best decision, as I've shared with Mr. Gilmore. Certainly, preparing the site and the cost of some of the populated properties and how that factors into the estimate for the project to go forward is probably first and foremost my reason to see the numbers and the data. Also, as Jim and I have talked, how can we create a win-win out of this that leverages the TIF for redevelopment? But whether it's other projects in the neighborhood, I would also like to see that maybe part of this has helped seeding land trust. And so, get back to the prior discussion, if part of this makes sense to help some of those payments agreed to, ultimately if that's the case, that we can seed the land trust to help with affordable housing, then we're actually making, you know, a real effort to put something that's been talked about for some time into motion. And so what that looks like as far as projects yet is to be determined, but it would be a commitment ultimately that would say, here's the win-win for everybody because of this project and the zoning change, as well as financial impact that could seed the future.
Commissioner Gregg?
Yeah, and like I said at the zoning hearing, I support the project, I went to Newman Center myself when I was at NDSU, and I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood. But we're talking about affordable housing a lot here today, and what we're signaling to developers is that if you buy a block of single-family homes, you allow them to fall into disrepair, we will help you demolish them with our tax dollars. That's a silly thing to signal if we're really looking for affordable housing in these neighborhoods. Two, we're talking about using tax dollars to help the neighborhood. I live in that neighborhood, that sounds good, it's better than some alternatives. However, that money comes from somewhere, that money comes from the school district, it comes from the park district, it comes from the county, it comes from the airport, it comes from vector control. We're taking those dollars that would go to those entities, and we are using it for what we think is good, and they really don't have a whole lot of say in the matter. The affordable component for the apartments, we're going to give now a TIF to a very large, expensive project that has no affordable housing component as part of it, there's no affordable housing apartments that I am aware of for this, for this project. So, while I understand the want from some of the other commissioners to look at this process more, I think we're sending a dangerous signal out there saying those things, so I don't think we should go look forward at this one. I think we should, if we're going to look at this, have a different perspective on it, and so I will not be supporting it.
Any other discussion?
I will just add that, you know, if this motion passes to proceed, I'd also like to see the data that takes the current tax collected on that block per year, and that total amount, and then the estimated tax with whatever the project ends up being, the 20, 30 million dollars, and what that taxable, you know, impact is, and then what's the in-between, between the time of a TIF period if it ultimately passes. It still maybe addresses the current tax collections, but it's also capturing future that, again, go back to the win-win-win scenario, because my guess is the tax collections today are pretty small on that block.
Yeah, I don't have those specifics, but that will all be laid out in the renewal plan.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to think out loud with my fellow commissioners if I could, you know, I'm not so sure this will pass or not at this moment, and I'm of the mindset, I'd still like to know what it could look like if it comes back to us with what Commissioner Grinberg calls a win-win. The notion of building affordability into it or looking at a land trust is an enticing thought to me to include in this, but I don't know what it would look like. Generally speaking, I, generally speaking, and I, and we've all been around the block, so to speak, with this project, and it's a good project, but it took some real yielding from the neighborhood and from the people around there to get this to go forward. My concern is, is this neighborhood concern of us letting blocks get into disrepair and then, after the fact, decide to address them with tax breaks and incentives and TIFs to improve them. So my recommendation would be, we send this to Tax Exempt Review, to have them vet this more thoroughly, and then come back to a vote with this commission, otherwise I'm, we may not get anywhere.
Commissioner Strand, present policy is it goes out to a team that does this and then brings it to Tax Exempt. So they don't, they don't have the data right now, what to pay or doesn't pay. You could have the influence of saying, we'd like to look to, as Commissioner Gregg says, affordable housing, what you're going to do with these houses that Larry talks about moving, we can ask all those questions. If then, you can come back to Tax Exempt Committee, Commissioner Pepcorn, they would then weigh in on it, but would have the items that you're asking about. If it goes to Tax Exempt, they're just going to kick it off to a study, because that's our policy now, they have to have it reviewed.
So Mayor, you will be, if we call for a vote now, and this doesn't prevail, where does that leave us?
Then we're not considering it for a TIF. But our policy states that a developer can request that and come to us and ask that, and we're obliged to, sent by policy, to send it to be studied and come back to us. We turn down the TIF when it comes back.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify then, our policy is a two-step process, tonight is to advance it for the full process in the Tax Exempt Review Committee?
Yes.
That's correct. If you don't pass this tonight, then we're done.
And then Jim, it goes to Tax Exempt Committee to review and then come to the commission? Is that how it works?
Correct, it also goes to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Well, to move this discussion forward, I'll move the, whatever the recommended motion is, to continue the due diligence.
There a second?
There a second?
Want to change your motion in any way, or?
Isn't it a black and white motion?
I think so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that this item be placed on the agenda two weeks from now for additional dialogue to happen, and what that looks like, I'm not quite certain, but perhaps Jim can comment on that, or do you want to come back in a month with more of the information that Commissioner Strand has cited, and then have more, I'm struggling here trying to figure out what the next steps are, but those are my thoughts.
Maybe we could come back with some of the information, in some ways we'd be starting down that road and providing you the data in terms of...
I object to that.
What's on the...
It's not our process. Our process is to either move forward with the process or not, and what we're saying now is we'll do some of the process. So unless we as a board approve moving forward the process, then we're not going to move forward the process.
Well, just to carry the question and the motion, Commissioner Grinberg made a motion, is there a second?
To Commissioner Garrett's point, I'll just, my motion period, and we're back to square one.
Okay.
I'll move to not authorize staff to look further into the Roars development request.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Second motion dies for lack of a second.
I think we have two options.
Eric, if a motion is not seconded at this point, is this not go forward, is that, how do we handle this commission?
Yeah, I think, I think the matter, you could say it fails, the question is whether it can come back anyway, you know, and I don't know, we're a little bit on uncharted territory in a sense, but the lack of direction from the city commission, there's still, you got an applicant, and you've got staff, and you've got some questions that apparently there's a desire to answer, I don't see them being forbidden from working on it, it's just, traditionally, the way, the reason this policy came about is applicants had to deposit $5,000, staff started working on it, and the decision was made, well, let's give the city commission a heads-up about it, get a little permission so that they're not surprised that staff has spent all this time on it, and the developer has at least invested some money in it as well. So, I just say that as background, but the bottom line is, I think if there's no action taken today, one way or the other, you could say it dies, but in another sense, there's nothing that prohibits the applicant or the staff from bringing it back with more information or slightly different information, whether that's a month from now, or two months from now, or whatever.
Commissioner Gregg?
Here's what I would say to that, if Roars wants to come back with more information, that's fine, but what we're, what we're dealing with is, are we authorizing staff to spend their time, their resources to do that? And if we're not saying yes, then de facto, we're saying no. So if, Larry, if you want to come back with extra information, I can't stop from doing that, but I refuse to allow my staff, if we're not voting yes on this, to do that. I think I'm standing on pretty solid ground there.
But actually, our staff would work with any developer that comes for us, so Gilmore has to look at any opportunity to...
And why are we voting?
No, it's not voted, but it's, why Jim is here is because Roars Development did talk to Jim about bringing this forward, every developer in town has that ability. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor, maybe Jim, you can answer this. I'd be curious, we really, this issue here was vetted so immensely to get through the planning phases of it, and the zoning issues. Have we had conversations with the neighborhood leadership about this? I just, I don't want to assume that they're on board or not on board, but I'd be, I'd be curious if this notion of customizing a TIF for other benefits for the neighborhood, if they would roll on board or not, because I want their advice, and I want to have their input into this process before we vote this up or down. Is that reasonable, or do you have a sense of, have we reached out to them, Jim, or could we?
We spoke to the neighborhood about renewal plans, if you recall last September, you did authorize renewal plans, including on this block with, specifically without a TIF, to look at that, and we looked at three blocks, and you approved renewal plans on those, so we discussed those with the neighborhood. At that time, we stopped any work on the renewal plan, because really, the renewal plan, you know, first needs to know what the zoning is, because if you don't know what you're, what was zoning, then there's no, not much work to do on the plan, because you don't know what the city commission will and won't allow. And so, sometimes in the past, you've seen these renewal plans kind of come maybe with rezoning, when it's less controversial, when it fits, obviously fits with the city plan. This one, it's, you can't really do a business plan when you don't know if you're going to have 85 units, or 110, or 26, and so, it really didn't make sense to start in any, you know, detailed analysis until we knew what exactly the city commission, you know, would allow on the site. I mean, the neighborhood, when we spoke to them, was opposed to the project, I think many of the people are still opposed to the project, and so, you know, I don't know if they would like a project where they get a little bit of a win out of it, and the developer also gets a win. We have not asked that question. If you approve us working on it, that's one of the things that we would do.
Commissioner Strand, I can tell you that when we did meet with the Roosevelt neighborhood and reached the compromise, that we came forth with eventually, discussions about this possibility were had with them. I don't know if it was a make or break in their process, but we were certainly exploring as many different ways of impacting the neighborhood greater than just this redevelopment block, so I know it's been discussed, just not in detail.
So Larry, if this weren't in place, would the project die?
Yes. Well, our, the Newman Center itself, and this is the difficult situation, the Newman Center, which compromises probably close to 60% of that block, they're not seeking any TIF funding or any assistance in their demolition costs. So, they're, they've authorized that portion of the project to succeed. The projects are coupled, they're built together as one. Now we're in a situation where the financial model for the market rate housing doesn't work without some TIF assistance, so we're really in kind of no man's land, to be honest with you. Again, we, that's where we're at right now, so I can't, I can't speak to the Newman Center. I mean, they've met their fundraising goals, they've announced the project, they'd like to get started as soon as possible.
Larry, if we were to build a little window of time in here, would you be, and your folks be willing to sit down like we did before with Commissioner Grinberg and I and the neighborhood leadership?
Sure.
And just see where everybody's at, and would that work for you, Jim, too, conceivably?
It's up to you, certainly.
Mayor, I move that we delay this one month, with the intention of Commissioner Grinberg and I and any others reaching out to the neighborhood leadership to see how they react or not to this proposed TIF going forward, and if they'd have any input, that would affect our decision-making.
So would it be, way, suggestion is you table the motion for one month?
Exactly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Didn't second it, any further discussion? Commissioner Gregg?
Larry, you've done, you've done the math on this, I'm sure, what's the ROI year one through five with and without the TIF?
Without the TIF?
With and without.
Three percent.
What's that?
Three percent.
Versus?
Probably eight.
Okay, so it's still profit. I mean, that's what we're talking about here, we're talking about how much money the business is going to make versus the government giving them money or not. So, I don't know, being an individual who doesn't get that same benefit, I have a hard time sympathizing, I guess, with that.
But the other thing you have to balance is whether you have a $20 million development in the space. It's moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
All the meeting back to order. We're going to, item 33, cost share proposal for burying overhead power and telecommunications lines, to Robert's Alley. Brenda Daring to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I would like to just go through a presentation in regards to some of the work we've done, looking at the possibility of burying the overhead power lines. There's been a lot of conversation in the past about the ability to bury those overhead power lines and what costs would be associated with those. And with the redevelopment along the Robert's Alley, that really gave city staff, along with Kilburn, the ability to do some research into the possibility of burying the lines and what those costs really look like between the power and the telecommunications. So right now, we're, this summer, we've got a request to rebuild the Robert's Alley from First to Second Avenue North. There will be some redevelopment on the city-owned parking lot, which is the Kessler Lot, and Kilburn will be working on redeveloping that with some storefronts, along with some apartment building facility in that area. And then moving to the north, we did reconstruct the Robert's Alley last year from Second to Fourth Avenue North. You've got the Robert's Commons, that's got some storefronts along the Robert's Alley there, and then also the Dillard, which will be opening up this summer. So I wanted to start with just some pictures, just showing, you know, this is what that Robert's Alley is looking like now that we have done the rebuilding. What you're seeing here is looking north along the Robert's Commons ramp development. And then this is another one, as you look north, you can see on the left side of the picture, the walkway that we've put along those storefronts. Here, as you're looking north, you'll see, you'll start seeing the building of the Dillard and the working along, around those overhead power lines. And then this is another one of the Dillard area and the power lines and working in conjunction with them. One of the things we have done in working with Excel is, we have done a backfeed into the Robert's Alley area. Historically, it was always fed from the north, but we have brought a backfeed in so it can be fed from the south, which allows us to turn off some of those sections of overhead power lines to allow them to complete the construction along the Robert's Alley. And then this is just looking north, from the south side of Second Avenue, looking north into that redevelopment area. And so this would be looking south, on the right would be that Kessler area, looking south, going towards, from Second to First Avenue North. On the right there, that's where they'll be looking to redevelop that parking lot. They're hoping to be able to start this fall, they'll be coming in with a building permit for that site. And this is another one, as you move further south. The chute you see on your left, that's actually the work they're doing on the Black Building right now. And then this is just moving, looking north, and so on your left there is the redevelopment Kel... And so on your left there is the redevelopment Kessler site. So Bruce and I have been working with the power and with the telecommunications companies. In 2018, we had a request to reconstruct the Roberts Alley from Second to Fourth Avenue. And in that request, we also had some discussion on the possibility of burying those overhead lines and what that would take. So in 2018, when we did reconstruct that alley, we did install conduit along the roadway so that in the future, if those lines were buried, we would have minimum impact to that new concrete. We also provided the pedestrian walkway on the west side of the alley, facing the businesses. And then this allows that alleyway to move towards more of a complete street by having that pedestrian walkway and then also with the reconstruction there. So over the last year in 2018 and 2019, we've been meeting with the utility companies to discuss and negotiate a cost share for the project and looking at what the cost of that project would be. We've had an electrical engineer that's been working with us just to really get the idea of what it's going to cost to go in and get those secondaries reconnected into the businesses by going from overhead to underground. We did take the cost share proposal to finance committee to review on March 4th, and they recommended an approval of the cost share. And then from there, we did take it to the Public Works Project Evaluation to discuss the cost share also on April 15th, and they recommended approval. Excel has come forward and they're agreeing to contribute to the project. And then staff, we have been continuing to negotiate with the telecommunications companies for a contribution towards the project. We've met with each of the companies and they've shown interest in contributing, but we don't know today what those numbers would look like. 2019, we do have a request to reconstruct the Roberts Alley from First to Second. So we are currently working on the project to get that constructed this year. So as I said, we've been working with an electrical engineer to really dive into what those costs would be. And so this would be just the First to Second Avenue portion. And so what you've got in front of you is the cost to bury the power line along with burying the secondaries and then also the telecommunications burying those lines. And so what Excel has said is they will contribute the cost of burying the primary. And then the city and Kilborn are picking up the cost to bury the secondaries. And then for the telecommunications right now, Kilborn and the city are sharing those costs. So what we've looked at is Kilborn is contributing to the buildings that they own. And the city would be looking at taking on the costs of the non-owned Kilborn properties. From Second to Fourth Avenue, that primary again is about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The secondaries are estimated at seven-hundred-and-thirty-two, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand with Excel and then Kilborn and the city contributing to those costs. The telecommunications costs are estimated at three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, eight-hundred. And so there's a little... From First to Second, Kilborn had a higher portion of the cost. From Second to the Fourth, the city's picking up more of the cost with Kilborn not owning as many properties. So the total cost from First to Fourth to bury that power, just the power part, is about one-million-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand and sixty-five dollars. Split those three ways between Excel, Kilborn, and the city. And then the telecommunications cost is five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred, split between the city and Kilborn. So total cost to completely bury the overhead utility lines would be two-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars with Excel picking up the cost of their primary, Kilborn picking up the price of the cost of the connections to their buildings that they own, and the city picking up the remaining costs. And so Bruce and I have been working... You know, we've been working a little bit with Eric just discussing the concept of burying the overhead lines and the different agreements it would take. But now that we've come to a pretty solid estimate, we really wanted to bring this in front of the commission and see how you would like us to move forward. We've talked historically a lot about the possibility of burying overhead lines. And until you can really get a project under your belt and be able to come back and say, okay, here's how it works. Here's the agreements we need. Here's what we need to move forward. We just kind of needed to start digging in and see what that all looks like. And so right now, we have an estimated cost. And so now really the question would be, you know, do we want to keep moving forward? And so before we dug in deeper, we wanted to come to you and say, okay, do we want to keep moving forward?
Commissioner Pepcorn.
So Mr. Chair... So Brenda, so the Second to Fourth Avenue, you know that stretch where there's a lot of small buildings? So then the city will... We've known this, that the cost to each of those buildings would be quite a bit. So basically, the city's going to pick up and Excel are going to pick up their expenses for that then. So that they don't have to pay anything? Is that kind of right?
Correct. To bury the overhead line, you really need to bring one contractor in. Because once you have your overhead power lines today and then they're going to build in the underground power, but then each of those building has to switch from overhead to underground. And until they're all done, they can't take that overhead power line down.
But my question is, so then are they still... They're going to be responsible for in their own building, doing the... If they need to do some switching over?
Correct.
So they are... So you have to keep this simple for me. So basically, the city and Excel are doing all the exterior, but the small businesses are going to have to do the interior. Does that summarize it?
No. This cost includes the interior work. So we've had an electrical engineer go into every building and determine what it's going to take. So when you saw the cost for secondaries... Let's go back. So let's just take Second to Fourth. That secondary cost is coming from the primary underground into the building. So that's everything.
Okay. Like I said, you got to keep it simple for me. So I get it now. But I guess to me, I think it's a great... It'll be... This is a great thing. But I'm a little bit concerned that we're paying for... Basically, a betterment for each of those businesses. Do you know what I mean? I wish there was a fair way that they could at least pay for a small part. And I know that's an impossible challenge. But that... Do you get what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. This is... That's why she's considered a pilot to see how we do this. But the same issue we had in the neighborhoods one time, it would cost each individual homeowner fifteen thousand. So it's really a question of whether we want to do this. This is psyched in the area. Commissioner Gerg.
Yeah, I got a few questions. I got a few questions. That was kind of my question right away, was how would this usually get paid for? Because to Dave's point, has every business owner that owns a property on this block said this is a good idea?
So I have not talked to every business owner. I know our engineer has discussed with every business owner. If you want to bury the overhead power lines, it's really an all or nothing, right?
Exactly.
And so, I mean, that's really the question. So if we want to bury them, either the whole block has to do it or it just doesn't happen.
And so I spoke to an owner of a building on that block, on one of those blocks, I won't say which. And that individual said that, you know, he was approached by Kilborn and others to say, would you do this and how much would you pay to do it? Well, that person said, well, it won't benefit me at all. I'll still get power to my business and it's still going to be the same. So I'm not going to pay for it. So it seems like we're moving the buck from the business owner who may benefit from it to the city. And some guy on Fifty Second Avenue South is going to be paying for this project that may never go downtown. So I have a problem with that, just like Dave was alluding to. These lines need... There's brownouts on this block, right? They lose power intermittently. It's not the best. It's old infrastructure. It needs to be replaced anyway. So why isn't XL just paying for it? Paying for what they would do otherwise? And then if there is an addition to the cost of burying instead of just putting up a new lines, what benefit are we getting as a city to pay for it? You know what I mean? Maybe that's a question for us.
No, I understand your question.
What I mean, but...
Yep. And I understand your question completely. So I think as we've dug into how do you bury overhead lines, those are a lot of the hurdles that we've seen. Right now, the overhead power lines for Excel, they've got a backfeed. They're functioning. They bring power to the businesses. Excel is responsible for the primary, but they don't take responsibility for those secondaries. So either you do, like you guys... Like you discussed is, you know, you wait till you can get a block completely on board where they're willing to put in some money as owners or somehow you try and keep that project moving along if that's something we would like to see as the city.
Yeah, so that's where I'm at. It is... I'm challenging the commissioners here to come up with a good example of how we, the city, are benefiting from this and not just the businesses. And also, if every person on that block isn't for this, if they wouldn't pay for it, they're not for it, right? If they wouldn't pay for it, it's not that important to them to do it. And from my understanding is most of the people in that block were not willing to pay. Therefore, they came to the city and said, you guys pay for it. You know? So I don't like that. And I think we should try harder to reach out to those businesses and say, do you want this? Do you need this? And without any money from us.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in one more time?
Of course.
I'm sorry about jumping out of order. But I will say, this is a pilot. This is going to be the first time. And we're never... It's never going to happen where everybody on a block is going to be unanimous because a lot of those people own the buildings and they're fine with the way things are. But the... Once again, this goes into vision for us as leaders. The Roberts Alley, once that gets done, that's going to be frickin' awesome. It's going to be... That's going to be a pedestrian walkway. That will be a benefit for the whole city. So that's the thing. But once again, I wish, if I was king for a day, you could make each of those businesses pay for part of it. But it's for this thing, it's just that's going to be impossible. Then this will never happen. All right. Thank you.
Eventually, they would pay the other taxes as the enhancement. Their taxes should go up. And then the other option is that Roberts Alley, just like Broadway, will have a lot of activity and there'll be a benefit for being on it.
Should enhance my house and then I'll pay more taxes.
I'd be curious why we aren't just looking at a special assessment for the affected businesses. That's what we do for everything else, it seems.
Explain why a special assessment doesn't go for electric utilities?
So to the best of my knowledge... And Dan is over there, so he'll jump in if I need any help. But typically, from my understanding is we special assess our public utilities. And so those secondaries would not be... That cost is not a public utility. So we own and maintain the sewer water, storm sewer, paving. But we don't own and maintain those utilities. And so it's been my understanding that those costs cannot be special assessed back to them. Now, if some cities actually own the power company...
It's funny to...
Or a public service owns... They own the electrical company. And then you have the water over a more head. So you have the ability to do some special assessments when you have some ownership in those utilities. But we, as a city, do not have that ownership.
Dan, is that correct? It's a fact that we don't own the utility. And XL and Cass County are both public utilities. So we can't special those unless we own the utility company. It was thought of, John. It's a possibility. But I think we found we could not do an assessment. So that's why it was not put forth. This has been worked on for two and a half years. And I think Grubbs has been working on it every other week for about two and a half years. So that's been an issue, so.
Three years.
Three years. Three years. I'm sorry. Commissioner Grinberg remembers.
Have we motioned a second?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll make the motion and then I'll just add a comment. To me, this is a pilot. This is a unique... This is not going to be the same. But I will say, this will make that Roberts Alley a very unique thing in our whole region. And it's... If you've been downtown on the weekends, that's a good thing. It draws people to our area. And we want to get more people coming to Fargo. That's workforce development. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gehrig. Strand.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Extra item. Resolution Declaration of Intention. No special assessments as direct revenue source for the diversion project. Commissioner Grinberg to explain.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by kind of just a review, a reminder that the diversion authority is a separate entity. And each of us up here have a particular role on the diversion authority. Commissioner Pepcorn, Mayor Mahoney, and myself serve on the diversion authority board. Commissioner Gehrig serves on the finance committee for the diversion authority. Commissioner Strand is on the lands committee, I believe, and has also served on the governor's task force. I think that's important to share, particularly for those viewers that might be watching tonight. And we all have respective roles, but we are part of a different group that makes decisions to move forward. And so I've used the football field analogy that I think Commissioner Pepcorn will relate to as a former NFL football player, that we have been in this process for ten years. And each year, we've moved the football ten yards down the field. And we started this legislative session with a number of boxes to check to move the project forward or move the ball in the end zone. Those boxes were a permit from Minnesota, increased funding of three-hundred million from the federal government, the injunction to go away, which happened approximately two weeks ago, and our request for an additional three-hundred million dollars from the state of North Dakota to round out a budget and two-thousand-and-nineteen dollars of two-point-seven-five billion to be able to begin the process. When we started this, you know, the analogy of the football was on the four-yard line. Last week, it was on the one-inch yard line and we scored a touchdown. The ball was moved in by legislative action, funding a level of seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars or an increase of a hundred-and-eighty million of the hundred-and-twenty million we had... Or the total of three-hundred that we requested. So we scored a touchdown, but we missed the extra point. If I can use that as an analogy. So what does all that mean? It means our plan has worked. It means that hard work that everyone has put forward with Plan V, even going back to two thousand and nine, it's taken a while, but we have put the ball in the end zone and we are now prepared to move the next steps to build a diversion. And I want to publicly say, there's probably not one person, with the exception of Mayor Mahoney, that has put countless hours and displayed passion to keep guiding this thing through with his role as mayor, as a commissioner, as well as a member of the diversion authority. And if I could speak for you in this case, I would say probably driven by the fact that we don't want to have flood insurance imposed on all our residents as a primary economic factor, that if we did nothing, we were going to be faced with significant flood insurance for our residents. So just as a backdrop, some perspective and appreciation for your leadership, Mayor Mahoney. We're in the end zone and now we're ready to go. But we're a hundred-and-twenty million dollars short. And so when I got a phone call Friday afternoon from a reporter asking, what's your next step? next step?" Because the hallway talk in Bismarck was, "We're gonna, we're gonna cut the project down." And I said, "No, um, we are not gonna cut the project down. Um, as finance chair, um, forget about all the zeros, uh, but we're gonna manage this." And, um, "And what does that mean?" he said. And I said, "We're a hundred and twenty million dollars short. Uh, our P3 bid is estimated at a billion dollars. From my perspective as chair of the finance committee, once the legislature adjourns, we will go to work and figure out what is the alternative path to keep the project moving, knowing our financial models a little short." And I say a little, a hundred and twenty million, but in the grand scheme, um, you know, where we're at. And, um, so it's as simple as this for me at this point. Um, instead of bidding a one billion dollar project, we go to work and we pare back, um, a hundred and twenty million dollars of work in that one billion dollar estimate. And so we set up a bid of eight hundred and eighty million dollars, and, and that'll be uh, one recommendation to solve the financial perspective at this point. And then we have bid alternates for a hundred and twenty million. Um, so when bids are opened next year for the P3, uh, we'll have a base bid, and we'll have bid alternates, and we'll know what the bids are for the base bid, and we'll know what the bids are for alternates, and we need to define what those alternates are. And also, maybe tag along with those bid alternates, that we have a timeline. Let's just say we bid this and open bids in March 2020. The successful bidder has to hold their alternate bids until the following spring of 2021. And then we take those actual costs back to the legislature, um, and ask them to continue the funding toward those additional contracts to fit in a window of the first year, if you will, of project development, with all, under the auspice that we hope this thing will be built in six years. So that's how I answered the question. Um, and the question was to me about special assessments, and I said, "We will, um, in my opinion, as one city commissioner who has a role on the diversion authority, we are not gonna assess the residents for another a hundred and twenty million dollars. Uh, we're gonna work this through with a generous commitment the state has made and manage this accordingly." And so, um, thank Eric Johnson for his role in drafting a resolution that in essence reiterates what took place here years ago, that the city commission, um, supports a special assessment district only for a backstop of the bond market and using our local sales tax as our portion of this project cost. And that's the intended purpose of the special assessment district. A lot of people, um, you know, don't understand the details of that, uh, but we need to be better at being transparent and sharing that that, that's actual what was put in place years ago. And to think that, um, we're gonna have a special assessment for a hundred and twenty million to pay for construction, to me, in my opinion, is not, is not what we're gonna do. So I put forward this resolution to clarify that. Uh, obviously with the closing days of the legislature here, um, that's the intent behind the resolution. Uh, late this afternoon, Commissioner Sherrling called me and asked me to consider, obviously sharing this tonight in perspective of our roles, my perspective role, uh, but her thought was that we should maybe just delay action on the resolution until the legislature adjourns. And I said, "I'm fine with that, but I wanted to have this discussion tonight so that the public knows it is not the intention, at least for our decisions here, to say, 'We're gonna close that gap with a hundred and twenty million dollars, a special assessment,' because we can manage this in other means and still work with the colleagues in the legislature in 2021." I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, but this is a, this is a, something we should all be proud of where we're at at this juncture. Um, you know, weeks ago, we were talking about all the frenzy of getting ready for flood protection and sandbagging. Imagine a city who is not spending its time every spring thinking about, um, uh, how we're gonna protect the city, but also the time and energy all of us have spent over the years on this topic. So it's time to act and, um, and time to move forward, and, um, I feel we're in a comfortable position to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Mr. Garrig.
Uh, I wanna thank Tony for, for bringing it to the, uh, putting it on the agenda. It's an important discussion, and, and people have been talking about it, and, and they are concerned about it, because some people have very large assessments on their homes for the diversion that have not been acted upon yet. I also wanna thank Ed Schaefer for writing the letter that he did to legislature, uh, expressing kind of his concerns in his letter, and I don't wanna try to put words in his mouth, but if you read the letter, I hope that you do, he talked about the cost of the diversion going up, he talked about the funding not being there, and he wants the diversion authority to basically have a study to try to find out ways to reduce the cost instead of increase the amount of dollars from, from other entities. There's a critical element, uh, that was missing on Mr. Schaefer's paper or letter that he wrote, and it's, it's a subject that's glossed over quite a bit, I think. Um, if you were to ask any of the commissioners up here or any of the board members on, on the diversion authority, what the cost of the diversion is, it's two point seven five billion. Uh, it's two point seven five billion repeated in the papers, two point seven five billion on TV and radio, uh, two point five million in meetings like this, uh, and two point seven five billion on documents that we have for funding. There's a major problem with that. That's a twenty eighteen number, uh, twenty eighteen dollars. That, that's the assumption is that the diversion is complete today, and it costs a two point seven five billion dollars. Okay? That's what we're saying. We're hoping, like Tony said, that to get this done in six years or so, so twenty twenty six, uh, that number is three point one three billion dollars. And I didn't make that number up. That came from our staff, uh, and we know that number. In fact, everyone on this board knows that number. One point, or two point seven five billion is, in my mind, a dishonest number. And it's, 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 we're asking money, more money from the feds, we're asking more money from the state, um, we're clawing and screaming and, and trying to get this extra do, extra dollars from the state to get to that two point seven five billion number. The big issue with that is, even if they gave us exactly what we're asking for, two point seven five billion dollars, we're short nearly four hundred million dollars, four hundred million dollars...
Mr. Chairman, that is incorrect.
Well, I'll, I'll speak my, my piece, and you can, you can disagree all you like. And again, I didn't make these numbers up. Talk to Martin. He's the one that gave that to me. Um, so, even if we got exactly what we wanted, we'd still be short. Uh, so, us not being honest with the public, not being honest with the legislature, not being honest with ourselves, we're putting ourselves in a position to be short, even if we get exactly what we asked for, putting us, again, in a position to ask for more dollars down the line. Uh, so I don't wanna hear this commission talk about two point seven five billion dollars anymore. It's three point one three if we're on a, a, the proper timeline. If it gets pushed back and delayed like it has been over the last decade, and let's say it gets done in twenty thirty-six, okay, that number's gonna be much larger. Okay? It could be four billion dollars. Um, so we need to start talking in real, in real dollars, not in last year's dollars, not in twenty fifteen dollars, not in twenty twelve dollars. That doesn't make any sense. That's dishonest. Uh, so that's why I'm asking for, from this board, is to give the real cost so that we can ask for the real dollars that we need and get this project complete, 'cause otherwise we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep coming back to this over and over again, and we're putting the, the project itself in peril by not being honest about the numbers, 'cause people at some point are gonna say, "No, we gave you exactly what you asked for, two point seven five billion, now you're saying you're four hundred million short." Um, now, more to the point of the resolution, I'm fine with the resolution. I actually appreciate the intent of the resolution. However, if I were a city commissioner when that vote came up, I would've done the same thing that Dave Pepcorn did and voted against the assessment, first of all, uh, because the people of Fargo overwhelmingly voted no against it. And then, the subdivisions of North Dakota or, or Cass County and, and the area, they voted yes for it. So basically, the government said, "Yes, we're gonna assess you." The people said, "No," but we have more land than they do, so we passed it. Um, and at that point, Mike Williams tried to call for a revote, and that was denied. So, if, if you go back and look at the history of that special assessment vote, it's not a pretty one, and it's something that I think shouldn't be supported, saying that we will use special assessment dollars if we have to, if we default on a loan. People don't want that. Um, so I, again, I appreciate the intent. I don't wanna special assess people either for this project, um, but the reason I'm gonna vote no against the resolution is not because I, I agree that we shouldn't assess. I'm saying we shouldn't say we're gonna assess at all. There should be no reason why we should ever assess the people of Fargo, uh, for this. You wanna use it for collateral for the loans, that's, that's one thing. Uh, but I'll, I'll never, as a commissioner, vote, uh, to special assess people for this project, and I hope that the rest of the committee feels that way, too.
Just as a clarification to the public, we would not vote on the special assessment going in. That's the water board that does that, and by law, they already have the authority, Tony, so this commission would never vote on that. Mr. Grinberg, do you wanna comment?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, everybody has, you know, their perspectives, and I appreciate Commissioner Garrig's perspective, but, you know, you get into the details, um, you know, the experts that have helped put us where we're at. I'm very confident that we are moving forward with that number, and I'm even actually on record in testimony in the House Procreations Committee, um, if you provide funding for the full eight hundred and seventy million dollars, we're not coming back. Um, so I put my stake and my credibility on the line with that commitment and the belief that, uh, Mr. Nicholson and, as mentioned, and, um, our financial modeling experts have got this right, um, and we'll know more when things are bid. And the other thing that kinda creates, you know, another factor in this, is that the federal money escalates. So, um, as the project escalates, so does the federal, um, through escalation by nature of the federal government, so, um, we, we, you know, we can, we can, we can have the discussion on budget.
Can you just explain to the public, Tony, what the three point one billion stands for? Is, if all the people put the money in, the feds put in the extra three hundred, the state put the extra three hundred, the state of Minnesota put in eighty-six million, if everybody put their money in as they should, or even if they do it in two years, that three point one million, billion is not more money that we would need. That would be paid through, through the escalation as time goes on.
The model is built at two point seven five, um, with a long-term contract with a P3 over thirty years, and the private contractor bringing in four hundred million of their capital as well in the project, so.
I don't want that confusion. Any other comments? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Could, could we just have an overview of where are we at with the legislature right now? And what do we need to do to get back on track to the funding level that Fargo had asked for and anticipated?
Great question, Commissioner Strand. Um, Friday morning, the House concurred with the conference committee report on Senate Bill 2020, which, um, contained, um, the language for the FM diversion, um, at the seven hundred and fifty million dollar level. Um, the, the process then of that bill being, a Senate bill would be, um, messaged back to the Senate, and, um, today, um, it's my understanding that likely that would have been, been messaged to the governor. Um, and there is talk in Bismarck whether the governor will veto this bill or not, which is part of what Commissioner Sherrling's, um, you know, um, perspective was, that, you know, um, largely this resolution just reinforces what we've done, but perhaps we should wait and see what happens at the adjournment of the legislature, which is predicted, um, um, on Saturday, at day seventy-seven of day eighty, um, by constitution. So, um, that's, that's kinda where things are at, um, from a standpoint of what the finance committee and what the recommendations to move forward to manage, the seven hundred and fifty million dollar, um, commitment, will be a number of options, and just as, you know, I had illustrated one potential option, and bid alternates, um, we'll have actual numbers on the bid, um, a year from now or less than a year from now, and if we, um, if it seems plausible to approach with a bid alternate approach, then we just package that with a period of time that that bid stands eligible for us to award, and we take that back to the legislature as one option. And there has been expression of, "Come back to us when you know your actual numbers, and we'll work with you on the gap."
So one of the things that was confusing, John, during the debate is, what is the actual price? The P3 hasn't been bid, so people have been concerned about that. The seven fifty is sitting there right now. The governor has, as it was delivered to his desk today, three days to decide whether he wants to veto it. If his veto is upheld, then it would go back into the committee to have a rediscussion on the eight seventy. Where it sits right now with the seven fifty, and why Mary Sherrling has asked us to delay two weeks on this, is that right now, our resolution says seven fifty. What if the governor goes back and it goes to eight seventy? We still would have the same intent, not to use the tax assessment district if we didn't need to, to fill the one twenty, but the, uh, then not use the tax assessment district unless it's needed in the future, which is basically what it is. And Commissioner Garrig's comment, the, the tax assessment district is to help guarantee and get the bond costs down and get better interest rates. That's why that exists. So, uh, tonight's discussion is just with the reassurance, 'cause a lot of people put out there, "Well, if you don't have the one twenty, then you're gonna do a tax assessment to make up the one twenty," and that's why we wanted to have a discussion. This would actually go back, chairman's discussion today was, this would go back to the finance committee, and they have thirty to ninety days to come up some alternatives, which Commissioner Grinberg has just, uh, put out there. There may be some other ways to look at things as well. Uh, we also have reports that the P3 people that wanna bid on this are fairly aggressive, and we may get some benefits of that. We may get some benefits of owning some of the land as well. So there may be some ways we can find some cost savings. But as it sits today, our ask is eight seventy, and that's been well worked out. I think Tony took six months to come up with that, and that was with the corps and the engineers. We came up with that price, uh, point that we thought we needed. And although many people talk about the cost, when you redesign the project to the Plan B, it increases the cost. That's what happened. And as we started this out as a one point eight billion dollar project, it moved to a two point two billion dollar project, and to as commissioners, as we know, the longer you delay, the more it costs. Intent is to get full build in twenty and build it by twenty twenty-six. Then we keep to our pricing, and that's exactly what we want. So it's up to the commission if you wanna delay this for two weeks and then take it back up, but the message will be the same to the public, is that you do not want them to feel that we're to make up the deficit with that, uh, tax assessment district. Is that fair?
Yep. And I'll honor Mary Sherrling's own request.
Okay. So your motion is to table for two weeks?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second, can I make a couple of quick comments on it?
Sure.
So the, the resolution says no special assessments as a revenue source, and then on page three, it talks about, uh, that it will be used only in the event of deficiencies. Uh, to me, I want the language to be much stronger than that, saying, "They won't be used, period." And, and the thing that concerns me is, like Tony talked about, uh, this was passed without the public being in favor of it, and then when you hear this statement saying, "It's not up to us, it's up, up to the Cass County Water Resource to decide whether to assess us," that's obscene. So the taxpayers are against it. Some people that they didn't even elect are gonna determine this special, the special assessment. If, if that happens, uh, all hell will break loose. I can tell you that.
Eric, could you explain that, please?
No, I, I don't need any explanation. I just said exactly.
Dave, I think you need to understand the legal part, 'cause it's already signed. We already have a guarantee that this, the tax assessment district will guarantee this project.
No, I'm, I'm well aware of that, but I'm just telling you, whatever happened, however that happened, if that happens, where you start assessing us, when all of us vote against it, good luck with that one.
Yep, uh, well, uh, with respect to Commissioner Garrig, what paragraph three is just saying is that the city affirms the same commitment as, is already, as the mayor just said, already in the joint powers agreement, that is the, is the vehicle for the Water District to do the assessment district. And, and, and while everyone would like to be able to say there will be no special assessment, I mean, it would also be, uh, not completely accurate, because part of the guarantee, uh, for the bonds holders has to do with the fact that that is the backup. That allows you to get the better interest rates and allows you to get more credit, uh, is to have a special improvement district, um, like it or not, Commissioner, and that's, that's sort of the, the legal framework for it.
Oh, I don't like it. And I, it, just to go back in time, uh, that was, it was very interesting, 'cause I was the only commissioner that voted against it, and I was called on the carpet. There was a whole bunch of people, I won't name names, but they, they said, "You know what, Dave? We need you to shut the hell up." And, uh, it took a lot of courage, and, and, but to, to think that this is what can happen, a special assessment can be imposed by a water board for the whole Cass County, that's, that's not good.
Well, it gets back to the point about, we have a strong voice and presence on the DA, right? So, you know, what we say matters, so.
Apparently not, apparently not.
Any other discussion? Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrig?
Yep.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Next item, we had a Main Avenue discussion, is that right? Got our last item, Brenda? Tom?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, just a quick update on Main Avenue. Main Avenue construction did start last week. Um, we've seen a number of traffic impacts downtown with that project kicking off, especially being that, uh, Twelfth Avenue Bridge and First Avenue Bridge are still closed, uh, due to flood impacts. Just a little update on the project. Uh, they've started, uh, the portion between Second, Second Street and Fourth Street is currently closed, uh, being detoured to NP Avenue. Uh, the project will continue to move west. Uh, probably next Monday, they'll do a road closure on Fourth Street, close down that intersection, start working there. Uh, hopefully, um, hopefully within the next week, maybe mid-part of next week, uh, First Avenue and Twelfth Avenue Bridges will be open. Um, First Avenue Bridge is currently open on the city of Fargo side. We don't really have anywhere to release that traffic onto the Moorehead side, so we continue to work with the city of Moorehead and coordinate our efforts there on, on when it would be appropriate to pull our closures and open up that First Avenue Bridge.
One of the questions I got was, "Why did you start the project when the flood's not over, so that you have one, one bridge that basically is usable?"
That's certainly a conversation we had. Uh, we did have discussions a couple of weeks ago with the contractor. Uh, the issue is, if we held them off on their, on their starting of the project, uh, it would've delayed the, the completion timeline of the project. Um, we had great concerns of doing that day one on the project, of pushing back the completion. Um, it's a, it's a very old corridor. It's in the downtown. Um, we do, we do expect some unforeseen conditions, uh, that could naturally push back the completion already. So the concern was just starting off day one, pushing back the completion, having more unseens, and then, and then ending a project in, in late October or early November that isn't complete, uh, and potentially not open to the public. So, that was, that was the conversations we had. Um, it, it, it is impactful. Um, we do encourage others to, to take alternative routes, uh, if they can, uh, but hopefully it'll be better in, in the next, uh, week to ten days.
Okay? Tony had a question?
I'm just gonna give him your cell phone number for all the calls I'm getting.
Well, and we, so we, we have taken a lot of calls. We, we have tried to do, uh, a number of things, uh, you know, timing of signals. Um, we're monitoring that as much